I've got three foot on.
Still working on it.
Okay, I'll come up there.
I'm not worried about that.
I just come up here too.
I'll come over.
That's one week so far.
I'm there.
They both went the same way. I told them nothing happened.
Okay, what? Okay, I'll come up there.
I just come up here too.
No worries. I'll come over. That's Monday week so far.
Other.
They both went the same way. Yeah, Jim's been.
Yeah.
I absolutely don't know of a guy when I've been out.
Go ahead and call our meeting to order. The council meeting for tonight, April the 23rd, 2019. We'll open our meeting with a prayer led by Councilman Plater. And a prayer led by Councilman Steele. Father, thank you for the state. You've given us this opportunity to come together as a city. We just pray your blessings on our time tonight. We just pray that everything we do will honor you. We pray this tonight in Jesus' name.
Amen.
In the name of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, if you would, call him, please.
Captain Fred Freeman.
Here.
Captain Coop.
Here.
Captain Plant.
Here.
Captain Steele.
Here. Very good. We have just received the minutes. Do we have a motion that we...
Counselor, I would like to move that we carry these over to the next meeting.
A second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Okay, we will carry the minutes over to be approved at the next meeting. And now we'll move to approve our agenda and our consent agenda. Before we do that, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda that we would like to incorporate?
We've got a thing. The library embarrassed to expand now.
Okay.
Counselor President, I'd like to... Excuse me, we're down two full-time employees at the library. Emily has asked, excuse me, that we move a couple of our pages up to help fill this void. That would be Carter Moore and Christian Vega.
Okay.
Move those up to work in circulation. That's part of the library.
Right. We'll add that to the consent agenda. Is that okay? Yes.
The other thing is, I would like to ask that you allow me to sign an agreement with a company called ETC Institute out of Kansas City to do a citizen survey for the city of Trustful. This is a company that does and has done surveys in 49 states or the largest in the country. They do a lot of our fellow citizens or cities around here in Alabama. But I think it's something that'd be beneficial to us as a city to try to see kind of what we're doing and how the citizens respond to the survey. So I would ask that you allow me to sign an agreement. It's up to $16,000 is the basic price and there's other options. It could go up to $20,000. I'd ask that you allow me to approve up to $20,000 for this survey.
Great. We can add that to consent agenda also? Yes. We'll put that on the consent agenda. And the other thing I'd like to recommend is that we move item I, Proclamation Shine, to the top of the agenda so it will become Agenda Item B. With those changes, unless there's anything else. I have a motion in a second. In a second, all in favor? Our agenda is approved and the consent agenda will be approved when we get to that part. The next thing on our item actually. So first, we'll have public comments. We have three who have signed up here. I'm going to ask that some of these be reserved for the public hearing because I know that's what a lot of people are here for, the public hearing and the rezoning. And I've noticed that a couple of them are that. The other one is about gymnastics. If you would like to get up and make your speech, Angela Grigsby. If you would, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Angela Grigsby and I live at 515 Low Lane, North Hospital. I had not initially planned to speak, but I do not feel comfortable speaking out for our community. I am deeply concerned about our Trustful gymnastics program. We have been pleased with the coaching, the environment, and obviously the convenience of its location for several years now, and our daughter has enjoyed her time at this gym. Unfortunately for us, in February, Ingrid believed it was more important for gymnasts from her private gym, Ingrid Gymnastics, to occupy our gym and take away both our gym time and coaching time that we pay for. My husband notified David Vincent that this didn't seem right to us. It didn't seem right to him either, and he resolved the issue immediately. The following day, our Level 4 and 5 coach was fired, not for calls, but for personal reasons. Since then, there have been a series of what appears to be retaliatory actions taken against a couple of the current competitive gymnasts. The most recent is the most extreme. My daughter made the HDMs dance team on 322. Ingrid was kind and congratulated Catherine on that when we returned to the gym after spring break. The following Monday, Catherine was a few minutes late to practice. Ingrid asked her specifically, "Why are you late?", to which my daughter replied, "I have a dancing practice at the school and will be about 15 minutes late to gymnastics on Monday." So now the following Monday, she's now put in a demerit system. And it's extraordinary. If you eat the wrong snacks, demerits. But here's the thing, if you're late to practice at all, two demerits. After 10 demerits, you will be suspended and kicked off the team. So my daughter will be dismissed from this program in just over a month. Ingrid has not been forced to choose her priorities, whether it be Ingrid Gymnastics or Trustful Gymnastics. So how is it right that my 12-year-old daughter must choose? There's been a couple other. For example, once our coach was fired, we no longer progressed to get further our skills. But yet, she's posting out their own websites about her Ingrid Gymnastics and how the skills that she's showing them doing something, if you're not familiar with gymnastics, giants. So they're progressing and we're staying where we're at. We've also been told our team camp has now been canceled. If you would like to attend a team camp, you can come to Ingrid's. So I would just like to put this out there and I appreciate your time and thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, again, I'm going to ask if you feel that you'd like to speak now or hold your comments until we get to the public hearing on the rezoning. I noticed the other two are mentioning the rezoning. Is that real rule? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your cooperation on that. Okay, moving to the next item on the agenda. We will have a motion to approve the consent agenda. And a second, all in favor? Very good. Thank you. That is approved. And now we will have a public hearing for B&amp;B bartending. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I moved that up and then I just jumped right into the next thing. Proclamation Shine, I apologize. Councilman Steele, I believe you have that.
Thank you, Counselor President. This is proclamation number... 2019-008. A proclamation in support of Shine promoting community service. Whereas Madison Ward mistrustful founded Shine, serving him and neighborhoods everywhere with a mission of getting others involved in community service. And whereas Ms. Ward has performed at charity events since the age of six and currently, among other organizations, works with dancers fighting cancer, who has raised over $250,000 for pediatric cancer research by doing something she loves to do. And whereas Ms. Ward's goal is to help people identify an interest, talent, or hobby and connect with them to connect them to a place where they can begin serving the community or raising money for a charity. By doing what they love, community involvement becomes enjoyable and individuals are more likely to continue working for that benefit of others. And whereas Shine is not limited to raising funds for an organization or group, lest the policy possibilities are endless. The results of volunteerism for a neighbor, a neighborhood, or a group impact lives and consequently leads to personal satisfaction and fulfillment for the volunteer. Now before there be proclaimed by the city council of the city of Trustful that the month of April is recognized as Shine Month with the goal of promoting community service among citizens adopted at this day, April 2, 2019. Congratulations to you, Ms.
Thank you.
Counselor President, just one thing too. I just want to say, I think she still is the reigning mistrustful. So, and she has represented us well, the whole Ward family. Her sister McKenzie is our Miss Team Trustful. So just appreciate the Ward family and how they've represented Trustful throughout this. So, thank you.
And I've had the privilege of helping the Warders for many years. And our families have been friends. I've watched these girls as they've grown up and find young ladies. And they have just outstanding parents who are good people. And they have just raised two very community-minded daughters. We're just really proud of them. Proud of the way that they represent this children's job. Thank you all very much. We really do.
Did you make that as a motion?
I did make that as a motion.
No, second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor? And proclamation passed. Thank you very much. And now we will move to the public hearing for B&amp;B bartending for School Foundation Shrimp Bowl. And I believe that's... Councilman Plant.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone here tonight in attendance for B&amp;B bartending?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Come on up here. If you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Give us your name and address and... And I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Bobby Greenwall, 4157 Creek, recorded in Auburn. Counselor President, you want to do the public hearing first?
Yes, if you don't mind, we'll do the public hearing first. Is there anybody here that would like to speak for or against B&amp;B bartending as operating the School Foundation Shrimp Bowl? Okay, if not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and then we will go with you.
Well, we thank you for being here tonight.
And also, I think we have a representative here. Chris has just, over a number of years, has helped with the shrimp bowl and done an outstanding job. This has been a great event for the city. He hasn't had a chance to come out over the years to this. It's a wonderful thing to support our city. It's a wonderful thing for our foundation. Have you been, have you, have you served? Is this your first time to serve though at this event?
For this event, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself and your company and your history with doing things like this?
Sure. So I'm president of B&amp;B and we are a beverage management company. We do around 1,000 events a year throughout the southeast. And our mission is to provide safe drinking environments, making sure that things are done properly. People are... Age verification is taken care of and that everybody is safe. They can sit at home.
All right. I know in the past, they've had different questions. Are you going to have just a segregated area that's just for people who want to... Is it, is it going to be beer and wine or just beer? Or how are you going to do that?
It's just beer, yes, sir.
It's just beer. Okay. Are you going to have a segregated area where that's just going to be for people who want to consume that? Or is it going to be mixed? How are you going to do?
Oh, Chris, you want to speak?
I wish I could. And I will say that over the years, I would love to, but we've done, we've had this at this event, I think, every year, and there's never been a problem. So the vendors have changed, but we have never had an issue. So, correct.
This is our seventh year. Chris Horn, 3180 Cobble Park Drive, Trustful, Alabama. I'm the president of Athletic Foundation. This is our seventh year of doing this. The area will be roped off. I will meet with ABC Board. They'll come out probably on tomorrow or Tuesday and make sure we have an exit in, exit out. The police will be there at the entrance to make sure. There are four tents where alcoholics are from. They're designated by red tents and at that location, they will get a band. They'll get their ID, identity check, and they'll get a band put around their wrists.
Okay.
And that's how we, that's how we identify at the legal age. And the foundation is not checking ID. That's the reason we hired a company.
Right.
And the reason we have moved from those, there have been some administration changes at the place that we used last year.
Mm-hmm.
So we had, we reached out to them.
Sure.
To come in our city and try to help them.
Oh, and we appreciate it and we're glad, we're glad you're going to be here. Just so we can ask for the record, have you ever had an issue with serving under age?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, that's something we always have. And we're concerned about that. And Chris and them always take care of handling that. We know that that's a concern of ours in the community.
We just want to see if it's... So that satisfies the questions that I have, Counselors, and I have any other questions? All right. That being said then, I would ask that we approve resolution... No, it's not a resolution. I just ask that we approve the application for B&amp;B to provide the alcohol service at the Shrimp Foundation Shrimp Bowl.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the public hearing for the resolution and final assessment of the nuisance abasement at 103 Post Oak Drive. So with that, I will open the public hearing for the nuisance abasement at 103 Post Oak Drive. Anyone here speak for or against that? No, we'll close that public hearing and I will ask for a motion.
Thanks, Counselor President. It's a resolution 2019...
1016.
1016. And it's resolution authorizing assessment of 103 Post Oak Drive. And, you know, the city has adopted an order for declaring nuisance on properties for certain reasons. This property is in violation of City's property maintenance ordinance. Notice was provided to the property owner, the deprees, and they failed to comply. The city proceeded with the removal of the structure. The property owners failed to remit payment. At this time, this authorization assessment at 103 Post Oak Drive. So I move for resolution 102019-016.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Okay, that passes. The next, the next item that we have is to hear an ordinance, create a civil service system for the city of Trustful.
2019...
020.
020. This is, this 2019-020, we want to create a civil service, a local service system for the city of Trustful. We have received a summary of everything, a timeline of events. I've sent a workshop package, timeline of events, everything that has led up to this moment. Should we move forward, you know, should we move forward and ultimately do this, which will be a very big step in the city's history of forming our own personnel board. It's, a lot of thought has gone into this. We received a lot of counsel, you know, from our legal staff about this. They've worked extremely hard and I appreciate it very much. They've worked extremely hard to make sure that not only, you know, that we can do this, but that we're doing it the right way, which is very important to us. Currently, we are under the Jefferson County Personnel Board. We have been for, I don't know, since 1992. We've been a part of Jefferson County Personnel...
Police Department's been over it since sometime in the sixties.
I'm sorry?
Police Department's been over it since sometime in the sixties.
Oh, yeah. The Police Department has been under it since 1960s and the rest of the city since 1992. We have reasons that we'd like to form our own personnel board. But paramount in that is communicating to the public, which, which we are here to serve, and to our city employees who, you know, are here to, are here to serve the city, serve us and serve the citizens. You know, we've tried to create an environment here where you're, where you're, I hope that you're treated fairly and with dignity. You know, we try to treat this like it's family. It's a small town. We've tried to be good over the years about taking care of our employees, about the benefits, about pay raises. And we've tried to be very meticulous in making sure that your rights under the personnel board are observed. And that's not going to change should we do our own personnel board. So just that reassurance to our city employees that, you know, those issues are still paramount in our mind and we want you to know that we want you to be treated fairly. So anyway, with that being said, this is an ordinance. I would ask that unanimous consent to consider 2019-020 tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second of unanimous consent. I'll take the time now to explain a little bit of our procedure. What we do is, is we will, as a council, vote first to consider this and then we will vote on the ordinance itself. And normal procedure is that it would be first reading and then we would vote on it in our next meeting. But we will dispense with that through the unanimous consent process. So with that, city clerk, if you would, call the roll.
Senator President Freeman?
Yes.
Captain Coop?
Yes.
Captain Plant?
Yes.
Captain Steele?
Yes.
I now offer a motion to approve ordinance 2019-020.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. City clerk, if you would, call the roll.
Captain President Freeman?
Yes.
Captain Coop?
Yes.
Captain Plant?
Yes.
Captain Steele?
Yes.
Yes. Very good. That does pass. Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is a resolution opposing the preemption municipal power on wireless facilities on city roadway and... And I'm not sure. You have that one, okay, Counselor Steele? Thank you.
Counselor President, this is resolution number 2019-017. There's current legislation pending before the Alabama Legislature and this would allow installation of utility poles and wireless facilities within the city on the rides of way. The proposed legislation preempts the ability of local governments to adopt ordinances in conflict with this legislation or to fashion different legislation to address this subject. The proposed legislation does not strike an appropriate balance between the need for the deployment of wireless broadband infrastructure and the need for local governments to manage its own ride of way. This proposed legislation exempts power utility companies from the co-location requirements and the exemption of power utility companies for participation in this legislation provides an incentive for the placement of new poles in local government rides of way. The proposed legislation imposes exacting an unrealistic application review, processing permits, et cetera. The proposed legislation prohibits local governments from charging in excess of $100 per pole per year for placement of new wireless infrastructure poles in the local government rides of way. The proposed legislation allows utility poles in the rides of way to be as high as 50 feet from grade or 10% taller than any existing pole within 500 feet. This leg, this legislation may result in a proliferation of aesthetically objectionable utility poles in Trustful-owned rides of way. So we'll move that we approve this resolution that we are against this legislation that's brought forward in the state legislature. I would make that as a motion.
Thank you. We have a second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Can you oppose? Okay, that passes. Our next item on our agenda is a resolution to extend the moratorium on massage therapy licensing in the city of Trustful. It was a good one? Nope, I skipped, I skipped the... Resolution opposing the preemption of local authority restricting use of disposable containers. We had a lot of discussion on this one.
Yep, this is another bill that's in the state legislature. Senate Bill 244 introduced by Senator Livingston and House Bill 346 by Representative Ledbetter. These bills completely preempt the ability of local governments to adopt ordinances restricting or limiting the use of disposable containers by local retailers. The ability of municipalities to protect health, safety, and welfare of their local citizens and to determine how to best protect the economic viability of the local community is a key and core function of local government. We feel this is extreme overreach of preemption bills like this and they fail to account for those diverse local needs, interests, and concerns, including environmental concerns, which make a community unique. So the city of Trustful hereby voices its formal objection to Senate Bill 244 and House Bill 346. And we formally ask the legislative delegation to oppose passage of these bills. This is resolution number 2019-018. And I would make this in the form of a motion, Counselor President.
Second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
We have a discussion. We just had a, we just had a preemption motion come up. I don't, I think the legislature, that he is over me and some of the legislatures to limit our ability, you know, for football insurance. You know, we talked about this with our workshop. Just for the purposes of the citizens, we don't have any current plans, I'm aware of, to ban plastic. We haven't considered that as an issue. This is coming out of legislature that would just simply say whether you do or whether you don't have any plans to do something like plastic bags, you can't do it. I'm generally not in favor of that kind of a mandate, you know, coming down from the legislature. On this issue though, we did... On this issue, though, there is, there is a little bit of split here because plastic bags are a legitimate environmental issue. For people who think that they're not, you're just kidding yourself. It's a legitimate environmental issue. But there is also a legitimate issue with the free flow of commerce that we don't, you know, the broadband thing is actually limiting the free flow of commerce. There is an issue with this about the free flow of commerce because we have national retailers here and a mishmash of, you know, various ordinances and things. And them supplying their stores on a national or statewide basis, you know, becomes problematic. I wish our legislature would address this at state level so that we could have uniformity here and not interfere with the free flow of commerce. By the same token, I don't like the fact that they're telling us that we're not allowed to address the issue, especially with us being in the huddle. Anyway, dispute with all. Anybody else? Any additional discussion on... We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, that passes. The next item is a resolution to extend the current moratorium the city of Trustful has on massage therapy. And Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Council President. Resolution twenty nineteen zero one nine, resolution to extend the moratorium on new massage therapy facility for thirty days till the completion of study of existing ordinances. We've not changed the ordinance, we're just extending what we have now out for thirty days. It does not affect the existing facilities in the city at this point. It just makes the moratorium extend for thirty days so we can do further studies. I move for approval of resolution twenty nineteen zero one nine.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Next item, a proclamation for downtown second Saturday events. And I'm not sure if you have that.
I'm happy to do it, Council President.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. This is proclamation number twenty nineteen zero zero nine. A proclamation in support of the Downtown Merchants Association Saturday Events. I won't go through the entire proclamation, but for the last several years, our Downtown Merchants Associations have been having what they call the second Saturday events in our downtown area. And we have enjoyed those as a city, I think. Most of us as citizens have really enjoyed this. And this is just a proclamation supporting what the Downtown Merchants Association is doing. So I will present that in the form of a motion, Council President.
Very good, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, that motion passes. And now, the public hearing for ordinance to rezonate five twenty-two and five eighteen Gadsden Highway from R two to RG C two. Councilman Cook, you will handle that. And we will start with the public hearing. So I will call the public hearing regarding this rezoning to order. Since we did have two people sign in prior to the meeting, I am going to extend the courtesy to them to be the first to speak. I will ask that everyone who has something to say, please come forward to the podium, okay? Make your name and address clearly. That's a good idea. Before I call on you, I'm gonna let the applicant make their presentation for the public hearing. I guess I've heard their presentation a couple of times now, so I just assumed everyone had, so I apologize. So with that, before we start taking the audience, we'll have the applicant come up, and I guess you're gonna speak for the request for zoning. So if you would, again, please come to the podium, name and address clearly, please.
Council President? Yes, before we, before we start this, I'd just like to ask for a privilege, if I could. I've been out of, I've been out of the country for almost three weeks, and I apologize for that. Had a much needed thirty-fifth anniversary trip with my wife, which we thoroughly enjoyed. This is obviously a complex issue. I would like for us to consider this tonight to be a first reading and carry over the vote to next, have our public hearing carry over the vote to next council meeting so that I could get a little more familiar with all of them.
No, I think that's appropriate. In the past, when a council member has asked for a first reading, we generally see the courtesy. I think if we're gonna do that, I think we should have a voice vote on whether or not we will consider it as a first reading. Okay. Council member, you asked for...
I mean, yeah, I'd like to ask that we do it for a first reading, just out of courtesy.
So this should essentially be a vote?
And so everybody understands, nobody's under any obligation to grant me that courtesy. I'm just, I'm just asking for a courtesy.
Bullshit, me, as unanimous consent? Yeah.
I have a motion for unanimous consent.
No, this is not, this is not for unanimous consent to consider the issue, that comes next. I'm asking for us to consider this to be a first reading, and I'm okay for us having a vote to have a first reading, if that's what we want to do. That's not what we've done in the past, but if that's what we want to do, I'm okay with it.
And I, and I second that. Let's have the vote. Okay, do we want to, do we want to do that before the public hearing? Do you want to wait?
I, I'd rather, I'd rather do it now.
Okay, sure, sure. Okay. So we will have a voice vote on whether or not this will be the first reading. So council clerk?
Council President, before we can vote, a yes vote means we're carrying over the first reading.
That's correct.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
If you would, call the roll.
Council President Freeman?
No.
Councilman Cook?
No.
Councilman Plant?
Yes.
Councilman Steele?
Yes.
Councilman Tate?
Yes.
For the sake of, everybody's here just looking, is this the most appropriate place to have this on board?
Can y'all hear me? Is this thing on?
Yeah, take into it.
Is this the best place for me to have the board?
Put it in the middle, we can see it better in the middle of the floor, in the middle.
Just talk loud. I'll be happy to do that, but I'll, I'll need to stand with it to do that. And the, those of you on the board will not be able to see it, so... So I'll pick it up and show it to y'all if y'all want to see it. Really, y'all are the ones I'm trying to show this to, so I don't know, this makes a lot of sense, but... All right, so this is the property that we are proposing to have rezoned. The reason we're asking for is C two in the front, RG in the back, which we feel is consistent with more or less everything else along Highway eleven. If you look at all of the other parcels along Highway eleven, they are this, they are this orange color here. They are all already zoned C two. So what we're proposing, and I, for the sake of... This conceptual plan will share more or less what it is that we're trying to do. With this strip across the front, we're proposing to be C two, which is, again, is general commercial. And it's consistent with everything else along the Highway eleven corridor. The part in the back, we are proposing to be RG, and I think if you look along the Highway eleven corridor, anything that's been developed residentially in that area over the last twenty years have all been RG. And so we think it's consistent with that. Examples of that, obviously, the most recent example of that is Brooks Crossing, which was down behind the car dealership. You've got Calumet, that's got commercial in the front, Garden Homes in the back. If you go the other way down Highway eleven, everything that's been done down there and along that corridor is all RG also, when you look at the residential. The, we have two, two users already on board. More or less. This picture illustrates the area to the right of the entrance. Okay, so what we're looking at, and what we, what we're proposing to do is a building station, convenience store on the corner parcel, and the Board of Education is proposing to build a building in the adjacent parcel to the right, if you're looking at it from Highway eleven. To facilitate this on behalf of the city, not on behalf of the city, but in conjunction with the city, what we're planning to do is, the city's property that they own now is more or less here. And so what we're being able to do with, with this plan is taking the overall property, more or less incorporating the city's piece with it, we can, by, by re-coordinating these properties, get the city a piece that will accommodate the Board of Education building that they're wanting to build, which currently won't fit on the piece that they have. Also, the plan, the overall plan as it's proposed will facilitate a traffic light at this intersection, which is aligned directly across from the existing Windex parking lot. So the main interest of Windex will be aligned with our entrance. And our traffic studies have shown that with the proposed uses that we have now, that it warrants a traffic study, and the developer has agreed in principle to, to put up the funding as part of the development, put in the traffic signalization. We were asked to do a couple of things and to put those in writing as part of the zoning request. And I'll just read this for the record, and we put it in writing as was requested, but the, the written obligations to be attached to the proposed C two and RG zoning, if approved by the city council, are, and we've listed three items. One, the architectural style of all the commercial buildings, not just the two that we've shown, we're fixing to show you, but the other, whatever goes on the other side of the well. All those things will be consistent with the style that will be established by the school board building, when or if it's designed and built. The fueling station and the convenience store to be constructed with all exterior sides brick or stone and have pitched roofs with asphalt shingles. And I've got it to show you what that is proposed to look like. It's here. So, you know, we've heard the concerns of the people that, you know, we understand y'all don't want a traditional interstate stop on the way home from the beach, gas station that's nasty and filthy and filled with who knows what. And so what we've, what we've looked at are other examples of how this has been done in other affluent communities and done well in a way that it's become an enhancement to the community and not a detriment. And we've got examples, I'll show you in a minute. Number two on my list is that the residential property will be developed with sixty-foot minimum frontages. The RG zoning that we're asking for allows for minimum frontages of fifty feet. We've agreed to do sixty-foot lots, which will accommodate size houses that we need to build to get to the price point where we want to be in the community anyway. Number three is that the minimum square footages for the houses within development shall be eighteen hundred square feet on one level, one level houses, and twenty-one hundred square feet on multi-level houses. And all houses shall be built with similar architectural style to the houses shown in the attached exhibits. And the exhibits, I'll show you now. This is, we've got a home builder tentatively on board as the purchaser of the residential lots. These are the architectural plans that he has submitted to us. I know the question's gonna be asked, so I'll answer it, that these same houses are being built in the Hoover community and being sold in the low fours. We anticipate that with the differentiation, the difference between what our lots are gonna cost him and what those lots of Hoover are gonna cost him, we anticipate these houses to be starting in the three eighty range and going anywhere up to the mid-upper fours. Also, as I mentioned before, well, here's someone, someone on the city council that asked at the workshop to see what the Board of Education building is supposed to look like. This is, ran you out of the box, but I was told I could show it. And I think that you'll find that that architecture is consistent with what we propose to do on the, the C two. Here are the examples that...
Public may not have seen that.
Well, I'll put it right here.
And that's the Board of Education building?
Yeah, that's a proposed, and I can't speak for the Board of Education. That was what I would provide by their engineer architect that they are working toward. And so what we've taken is the, the brick and rock that they are proposing to use there, we're proposing to use the same exterior features for, for what we're proposing to do. These are examples that we just rode around town to find, convenience stores that are in, this one is right out in front of Greystone. This one we just did, it just opened less than six months ago, right across the street from the entrance to Mount Laurel, next to where the Pigley Wickham was just built there. And then this one is right in the middle of Mount Brook Village, which I don't think anybody would argue is a bad place in town. And those are all my exhibits. What I, what I mean, we've, we've heard and read and know more or less what the concerns of the community are. We've, we feel like that we have addressed those in a responsible way. I think if you look at this piece of property, its shape and its location, that really the piece anybody outside looking in would, would consider to be an all-commercial piece of property just 'cause where it is. If you look at the depth that commercial property has gotten in the Highway eleven corridor, it's certainly not inconsistent to say that the thousand feet or so that is the depth of this property would not have been a reasonable request to do it all in C two. However, my client, Mr. Farmer, who is proposing, his company, High Point Properties, is proposing this development and this rezoning, heard the complaints of the people. And what we've, what we think we have done in the way of responsible development is to take the frontage, develop it as a C two, which, which is obviously, anybody that's looking at that zoning map can see, is obviously consistent with what the city has done over and over and over again for centuries, I mean, decades if not a century. And the, and to take that and then, and then give the residents in the Du Garden area a buffer between the commercial and their residential that is a residential property that is appropriate for that area. Numerous times I've come here to you or to the planning commissioner or whatever and asked for RG zoning and gotten denied because it is in the periphery of the community. It's out and close to Argo, it's wherever it's... And every time that that has happened, I've been told that is the kind of development that we want to see closer for the downtown area. But we can't get any closer to the downtown area than this. You know, we, we looked at the, the opportunity to do something different on that property that we're proposing as residential. I tried really hard to convince my client, because I was gonna build a house there, that we were gonna do some estate lots in there, and I ran my eyes on one of them I already picked out. But the problem is, it just doesn't work. We, we tried various and sundry ways for it to happen, but the fact is that the numbers just don't, don't work. The, the fact that, I mean, everybody's in here and they're complaining about traffic. But the truth of the matter is, the re, that traffic is the reason this property is so valuable. And, and I understand that the adjacent property owners are upset about the fact that this property is being developed because it's something that, you know, they've had the opportunity to look at for as long as they've lived there, and the trees are beautiful, and I agree with that. And I would say that if I was one of those adjacent property owners, I wouldn't be real happy to see that go either. But, but the fact is that who we represent in this meeting is a, is a private property owner who has private property rights. And I've heard you all speak several times about that your responsibility to the community is, is that you've gotta look out for the best interest of Trustful as a whole. And I don't agree, I don't disagree with that whatsoever. In fact, I agree with that wholeheartedly. However, when that concern becomes a violation of someone's personal property rights, then I would disagree with that. Because I think that, at its very essence, what government... Because I think that, at its very essence, what government's biggest responsibility is, is to protect the rights of the individual against the group, regardless of how popular that is. And I understand that you guys have got a lot of friends who are represented in the neighborhoods, so do I. I mean, a lot of these people, Ms. Becky, who I love very much, is here to possibly claw my eyes out later on in the night.
Nah, she just wants to switch you.
That's a very distinct possibility. However, you know, we've heard, we've heard the concerns and we feel like we've made every effort to address those concerns as reasonably as we can and still have a viable product at the end of the day. And we also think that what we are proposing is consistent with what the city has been doing over and over and over again in this corridor. So what I would ask for is the same consistency to be continued as we go forward. And I'll also ask, if at all possible, I know a bunch of people are gonna get up and talk and they're gonna say things that may or may not be nice about us, but I would like an opportunity to at least get back on the record once those things are said, if at all.
Council President, while the applicant's here, can we, can we, this is a matter of housekeeping, if that's what?
Council, we'll go with council questions first.
Well, this really wasn't, so much the question had, this is a matter of housekeeping. This was submitted, this has not been submitted to us, this was not submitted to the planning zone.
That's correct.
This document that you brought in denied, this wasn't submitted to the planning zone.
Yeah, when we had, we had discussions in the workshop where those questions came up and there were concerns voiced that there be obligation placed on the statements that we were being made.
Okay.
And so what we have, what we are attempting to do with that document is to put in writing something that we can submit to you all that would hold our feet to the fire if and when the development does take place.
All right, in fact, just real quick, the, if you're asking for garden home zoning for the back of the property, and our ordinance has a 50-foot minimum, I mean, you can go higher, but the minimum is 50-foot on garden homes by our ordinance, but you're stipulating that you will not go less than 60 on the frontage, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. The other item is the consistency of architectural style. I'm gonna read the entire thing, which you've shown us, the commercial style of architecture and then, and until the time, none of us, I don't think anybody had seen a proposal for the school board, but you're committing to, if this were to be approved, an architectural style for the commercial that would blend this together, that would not, you know, be different architectural styles for that, for the commercial front?
Correct.
Okay.
And we propose that to be consistent. Across the entire frontage, not just the piece that's adjacent to the school board?
Exactly, exactly. And then, in addition to that, the square footage, Council, Chief of Court, I'm not understanding, what is the minimum zoning for one-level garden home?
It's 1,200, or if it's two-level, it's 1,000 on the main level, as long as there's at least 200 on the second.
Okay, and the third stipulation, that's, that's the legal requirement, the minimum. And the third stipulation you've given us is a, one-level home will have a minimum of 1,800 square feet and a two-level home will have a minimum of 2,100 square feet. It's 1,800 on the bottom and the rest of the top?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
The total square footage.
2,100, okay. And that exceeds, that exceeds our requirement, and you're, but you're true stipulator, you're agreeing with that.
That's correct.
Okay, and I believe, I can't read the suit, because this sound by the applicant, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and can we incorporate that into the record and add that as part of the zoning request? Is that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Understood, Court, make sure that us know that it's been, and then that document is incorporated. Now, the other?
I'd like to say too, I mean, there's a point, that we, I think we sort of did a disservice when we created that RG zoning, which I was around when it happened, so I take partial blame. But the, you know, the fact that it's called garden home zoning is a bit of a, garden homes have gotten a bad name, for obvious reasons, from back in the early or mid-'80s when they started being built so commonly and all that. And so what it really is, is a, it's a more dense lot than is R2.
Right.
But the style of house being called garden home gives it a bad air, I guess. But really, what we're talking about is building the same style of house that you're seeing on estate-style lots.
Right.
But the thing is, if you look at what is developed today, nobody's doing that.
Right.
RG zoning, that style of lot is what the world is doing, is it?
And I was just pointing out that you have agreed to those being incorporated into the request, which, if this were to pass, those would be binding on this developer or anyone in it.
Correct.
Now, the fourth issue, Council President, if you will recall from our workshop meeting, and this is a small issue, but I think it is an important issue because of residents of Dugarden. Now, I understand that some of the children that currently reside there, they have little footpaths on the backside of this property that they travel back and forth to their friends' homes, is that right? That's what I was told, I was told that at the workshop, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, now, at the workshop, we, you had mentioned to us that y'all were going to work that out so that those little footpaths could continue to be used by those children, is that, and is that?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that we, we'd like to discuss.
Okay.
It's something we're willing to do, okay?
Okay.
If that's something that the committee wants to see, if that's what's something the city council wants to see, I just want us to think about that before we do it. I think it's, I personally think it's a bad idea. You're gonna end up with a space that's five feet wide, that's got a fence on either side of it, and, you know, if you've got a child that's young enough that you're not, you don't think it's a safe option for him to walk along the road, I don't think that I'd want him walking along a path that's five feet wide behind, between a couple of fences.
And I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying.
That being said, we are more than willing to put that as a stipulation on this if the people in Dugarden want to see that.
And the only reason I was bringing it up is because it was brought up at workshop, and we have residents here that apparently that is something we're concerned about. And if y'all are willing to address it, then I just think it needs to be stated over record.
We are, we talked about, you know, putting it in that letter, and, you know, my client wanted to put it in the letter and I argued against it vehemently and I talked him out of it, but with the stipulation that if you guys wanted to see it, we'd be happy to add it to the record here as part of what we agreed to.
Those are the only four things that I can call?
Council President? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to note that what Council Plant wanted to put in the records about the school drawing is just a rendering, a suggestion of what it's gonna look like. So if you hold them in our record to that standard, it may not look like that.
No, that's correct.
So what, if that changes, that's gonna make that, no?
No, 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 that's not correct.
What we've agreed to do is.
It's not gonna look like that, though.
But if we, what we've agreed to do is, if the school board decides to change their architectural standard or what they want to do, what we've agreed to in writing there is to match what they agree, what they decide.
Okay, so go match what they, what they, what they decide on.
Because, I mean, we just saw the school. Now, I think it looks beautiful, that's the first time I've gotten to see it. I don't know if that's the one that they're going to stick with, but what they have agreed to do is.
Stick with what they?
Well, if it looks like, if it looks like what's on that board, then they're gonna have to do it that way. And if the school board changes and uses a different architectural style, then they're, they've obligated, they're gonna have to change their architectural style.
I didn't read that, so that's what that document says?
Yeah, that's, that runs with the land and it's binding to them and to anyone who comes behind them, that they would have to maintain that style. Now, if the school board ends up looking like that, which, I don't know, I thought it looked good, but it may not, you know, but they'll have to comply no matter what.
You know, obviously, the school board is gonna be built by a government organization, so chances of that happening before we would like to build the C store, assuming that this thing happens is probably unlikely, so if, assuming that.